So we'll get started. We call to order the special meeting for September 16, 2019, with a series of financial transfers and some other matters. The clerk will call the roll. Call order attendance, I will be the clerk today. Anderson Burgos, Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan, Leahy, Labor Martinez.
Here.
Leacy, McGee, here.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentin. Please, Rand, please stand for Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Holyoke.
And the city council.
First item on the agenda is an order that the city council called to approve Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, Conflict of Interest, which is, member of the Park and Rec, Leah Destrom, hopefully I didn't quote that, I'm trying, even though I practice it, to have a contracted services outside with the school department. So she's working with Park and Rec, and she wants to do stuff with the school department.
Motion to receive and send to public service?
Second.
Well, she's here, so I asked her to come in. So motion would be suspend the rules to allow the employee, we asked her to come in, I guess there's a
Second.
An urgency for this one. So if you can come up to the microphone, all those in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, just tap it, make sure it's on. There's a button underneath.
Yeah, on top.
Or on top, they might have moved it. Alright, so with this, I know you emailed the clerk, then you emailed me. Can you explain what is going on and why the need for this?
So upon signing my contract with the Holyoke Public Schools for services at the alternative high school, I noticed a clause which indicated that there might be a conflict of interest. I brought it to the attention of my supervisor, Mickey Buell, who then passed the concern on to Tiara West, who then referred the request, or the question, to Gina Martin, I believe her name is, the attorney for the school, who then indicated that I should reach out to the State Board of Ethics, or the State Ethics Commission. At which point I did, and they indicated that I would need to have my position with the Parks and Recs, in which I help with coordinating special events, allocated as a special municipal position, which would restrict my hours to 800 hours a year.
Okay. Terry, did you have anything to offer?
Hello, councilors. Yeah, I'm just here to support Leah. She's really known as Mrs. Mudpie. She was hired by Park and Rec this summer as a part-time employee. She, her job is to plan community-wide events, like the Mermaid Parade last month. Her hours are very limited, it depends on the event, probably between four and six hours a week with Parks and Rec, with no benefits.
So four to six hours a week with you guys, that's?
Yeah. It's very limited, she's a special employee.
Any questions, Council Murphy?
Not a question, but just a couple of comments. I've been working with Leah for the last week and a half. We're planning a domino tournament at Vega Park, where we now have domino tables as part of the park restoration. So she's been the coordinator, and I'm certainly hoping that we can okay this. Certainly, she's not going to make a phenomenal amount of money as a park employee, but she is doing something, and she's obviously very enthusiastic about what she's doing. So I'm hoping that we can approve this, and allow her to do the parks job on a part-time basis, and work under contract for the schools.
Council McGivern.
Speaking just on the, although I was away in New Hampshire on a family vacation, on the Mermaid event, I heard some incredibly positive and good stories about that event, and I think Leah's work showed and came through on that day, and other things that she does do. These type of events are very important to the city. Another of them take place in Heritage Park, that complement both the Children's Museum, the Merry Ground, our downtown areas. This type of position, part-time, is important for someone who has the talent. And I think this young lady shows that, not only does she have the talent, but she's been successful with some of the stuff she's delved into just in the past half a year. This special employee is just to make sure that the state law, having, not having two salaries, is always, needs to be watched out for, and certainly, we don't want people on the payroll in a situation where two salaries are being paid, and it's really only one job itself. So it's important, I think the last one we voted on was our former president, was the voice of Holyoke High Football, and we gave him the title to allow him to be the speaker at the high school football games, and also to sit here as a city councillor. So it's important, but at the same time, I think the work speaks for the individual here.
Council Bacon?
Thank you. Can we understand what, a little bit more, what the school position is, and how many hours that is?
Yes. So I work with the alternative high school for approximately 22 and a half hours a week. Sometimes that goes up to 25, sometimes it's down to 20. And I work specifically to help coordinate a program with neurodiverse population that helps them not only with their academic recovery, but also assist them in their self-mobilization. And that includes vocational training, self-regulation training, and just helping to put individuals in, on their own path, on their own independent individual path, right?
Thank you.
I hope I expressed that well.
Council Bartley.
So, Mr. President, I take, we're having a committee hearing right here and now, that's what we're doing?
Well, there was a, there was a request to try and do this tonight, kind of like we have with some others, because of them finding, she's already working there, she's been working there, they're trying to fix, in essence, what I call a glitch. They found it, they're trying to get the exception. Once again, we did it for the president, who was standing up here that night, we suspended the rules and allowed it that night, so yes.
Okay, so, yeah, Terry, you're gonna have to stand. I got questions for you, Terry. Terry, yeah, thank you. Terry, what are, okay, what procedures do we have in place, so why this didn't get caught by you, or a commissioner beforehand? Why was this caught by Ms. Destrom?
Well, in all honesty, Leah got hired, I think, in July. I don't think she was under contract at the time. Yeah, it was, and we started out. Yeah. And I actually, I asked her if there would be a conflict, and at the time, she didn't think so. At the time of hire, it wasn't a conflict.
Okay, so, but you saw her resume, and she's working for the city of Holyoke?
Yes.
And now she's got a job at Parks and Rec Department?
Yes.
Okay.
But she was under contract with the school department year to year, and at the time of hire, she wasn't under contract.
Okay, is there, is there a procedure by which we can just avoid this, so maybe when this happens, you can put this through the law department? It's not your job, Terry, to understand the law, but it's your job to, so as a department head, for, you know, some time.
Agreed.
To have a procedure in place by which we don't have to have the employee discern it herself, or himself.
Agreed.
Alright, and how do I, and what are her hours with you? And what are her hours with the alternative school?
Her hours with Park and Rec are not set in stone. We just decided on a couple hours a week for office hours, so people can get in touch with her, and can have access to our administrative staff. Her hours depend on what program or specific event she's working on, so they're not, it's not a solid, even four hours a week, or six hours a week.
What's the pay rate?
$14 an hour.
What's, so four to six hours per week until when? Is it?
I'm hoping that Leah can plan one event every month.
Okay, so you're hoping this is going to be an indefinite appointment?
Oh, I very much am. And I'm also hoping, and Leah knows, we've talked at length about having some of her programs be self-sustaining. For the Mermaid Parade last month, she did get a $400 donation from one of our local companies, and we're hoping that can continue.
Alright, and this isn't, this isn't all fully funded under your budget?
Yes.
Okay, and you have the account number by which it's funded?
Well, she's paid out of the seasonal account in Park and Rec. And some of the expenses will be taken out of either our recreation account, or some was for our Community Field Revolving Account, because that's where last month's event was.
Okay. And she, and she has a signed agreement with your department?
No.
Okay. Will she have a signed agreement with your department? So in other words, so she's just an at-will employee?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I think it's called a casual part-time person.
Oh.
Yes. Casual.
No.
As opposed to a seasonal part-time employee.
I believe, I love municipal terminology, I, you know, get, you know, we're former councilors, couldn't wait to say traffic calming, I used to cringe whenever I heard that. So, okay, and then, and that accounts, and when we look at that account next budget year, Terry, we're gonna, how many other seasonal employees do we have?
Within a calendar year, there's anywhere between 50 and 75. Right now, right now, there's about 25 active part-time employees.
Okay, and that does, that's not including community?
Oh, that's everybody. Community Field, Roberts Field.
Oh, it's Community Field?
Yeah, that's everybody.
Okay, but Community Field is self-funded, isn't it?
The revolving account, yes.
But that pays for the seasonal employees, does it not?
The ones who work at Community Field, yes.
Okay, so they wouldn't be under this, I'm just talking about the ones that are in the seasonal account, that's all. So how many employees are in the seasonal account?
At this time of year? Well, we still, oh, very few, actually. Roberts and Community are the bulk of our employees from September right through March. We still have some people on our roster for special events. We have two who give us some office assistance/program assistance, so very few, under 10, seasonal. There's still one fellow working for baseball. He does clean up in bathrooms, and turns lights on and off.
Okay. Yeah, just as a side, since you mentioned baseball, so next year, we'll probably get that McKenzie Field contract with the Blue Sox in timely fashion?
Yeah, a little sooner.
And maybe in timely fashion? Yeah, okay. Ms. Destrom, what are your hours with the alternative school?
Do you want to know what my exact schedule is? Or what are my hours?
Well, I heard you say the number of hours, but what's your, what's your schedule?
So my weekly schedule looks like Mondays, I go in at 10. I teach a class at 10:30, and then I leave just after 3.
Mm-hmm.
I do the same thing on Wednesdays. So again, that's, I go in at 10, and I leave just after 3 on Mondays and Wednesdays. On Tuesdays, I'm there from 8:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. And then I come in for two hours of collaboration on Fridays, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. My office hours with the Parks and Rec will be Thursday mornings.
Yep. And what's that, like 8 to 10 as well?
I'm sorry?
What are those hours on Thursday?
8:30 to 11:30.
Okay, so that pretty much covers your hours that you talked about. Okay. And Terry, there's no one else, in your estimation, that can fit this, did you advertise for this position?
I most, no, I did not. I met Leah last year, she was doing volunteer summer program at Community Field, I think for neighbors and friends, and I was just so impressed with what she was doing. I asked her to join us. Did I advertise? No, but we do, when we go out to hire every year, what we advertise for is program instructors and program support staff. So she does fit with what we advertise for.
Okay, so she did not apply for an advertisement. You met her volunteering at Community Field?
Absolutely, I asked her to apply.
And you, you asked her to apply?
Recruited her, I guess.
Is that normal? You usually do that?
For specialized things. I would do it if I needed, if I, Parks, when we hire lifeguards, or maybe as a coach. For specialized programs, I have recruited in the past, not very often, but.
I mean, what?
League coordinators.
No, and I'm not doubting your eye for talent, but I'm just suggesting that it's a public job.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, shouldn't public jobs always be advertised?
They are advertised. That's what I mean, she fell into what we advertise, the positions we have, we hired. We do advertise here.
Oh, that was being advertised at the time, and she had not applied, but maybe because she wasn't aware of it. But you recruit her for an advertised position?
Yes.
Alright, so where do you advertise positions?
Once a year, it's advertised in the sun, and it's always posted on the city website, and we work with Career Point, too.
Alright, is, so is there a Spanish-speaking paper in which you advertise?
I haven't done that in the last few years.
Why not?
And actually, I'll tell you why, because I'll be back, I'll be back before spring, because hopefully, our new pool will be ready to roll for July 1st.
Yeah.
I'm going to be asking for more money and more staff. That will take a lot of recruiting. Our staff, our summer staff, our seasonal staff has been a lot lighter since the pools closed. The outdoor pool.
Okay, alright, well, that's good news. So looking forward to the pool, the pool opening. But you will be advertising maybe for the Spanish-speaking papers for these positions, too, these seasonal positions?
We have in the past, but I didn't this year. We didn't, we didn't have that many openings. A lot of our people, a lot of our part-time people are so good and dedicated, they do return year after year, too.
Oh, they don't have to reapply?
Yeah, they do. Roberts Field staff, Community Field staff. Those are mostly the returning people.
So, but they have to reapply, so, but you wouldn't advertise for that?
Oh, it's always advertised, yeah, it's on our yearly posting.
Right, and I mean, it's Spanish-speaking paper, you wouldn't advertise around a regular basis?
I would, if there were a lot of positions to fill.
So it sounds like for a budgetary reason why maybe you didn't do that?
And time. If there's one position to fill, I really don't go all out and send it through the schools and newspapers.
Who does that for you, by the way? Do you do that, or does?
Personnel post-it.
Personnel post-it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then gets put on the city website, through IT.
Okay. So really.
And Career Point actually sends it all over tarnation, anyway, so. May I hire you?
No, that's, that's great. That's great. Thank you.
Council Tallman?
Yeah, thank you, and very, a lot of questions of Council Bartley, who's, you know, I guess is warranted for this position. But I just met Leah the first time tonight, and I've heard also good things about the Mermaid thing, and other positions that you do, anything to do with the youth in our community, I think is an important thing. And also, we've had several, probably in my time here, we've probably had four or five special employees that we had to hire through this way of doing things with Mass General Laws. So I'm very much in support of taking care of this right here, and wish you luck in the future work with the youth of Holyoke.
Council Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I haven't been here as long as Council Tallman, so I think I've only been through one of these before. So I just want to clarify my understanding relative to the role, so it would be the Parks and Rec position, that would be the special position, and it's limited in how many hours the person can work each year?
From what Terry said, she's going to only work four to six hours, that's a week, that was the intent for.
But does the designation limit the number of hours the person can work? I mean, what is the purpose of the designation? So that the person is not exceeding full-time in the totality of the hours?
Well, I think it's, it's really, it's like a temp seasonal, so if you want to give it a title, you give it a title, but it's really a temp seasonal to.
Well, right, but I'm just trying to understand what is the purpose of making it a special position?
It's not being, I see what you're saying. No, no, so really what happens is, in, as Council McGivern pointed out, the classic example was former President Jordan. He was a member of the city council, he was also gonna go do announcing at the football games, which is a separate job.
But we knew both of those were very small jobs.
That you still have to do a special rule to allow that to occur. So what's happening here is, she's working for the school department, which then she wants to work on the Park and Rec side, the city side, so in order to do that, you have to give special approval through it.
I get that part, but what I'm trying to understand is what the basis for the rule is. So if she's working, say, 25 hours at one job, and then four to six at the other, she's not exceeding a full-time job?
Yeah, but you still need approval?
No, no, I understand the need, but I'm wondering what the motivation is. Is it to control, so somebody is not working two full-time jobs at the same time? I mean, is that what the, it exists for? So it's for the people that really are working smaller part-time jobs, so that they can put things together? I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Through the president, the state law says you cannot collect two salaries in the municipality. You can only have one salary unless you are designated a special employee. We're not designating the position a special job, but we're designating Leah a special employee. We actually had one after Kevin, which I just remembered, was the, although I think it was temporary, was the firefighter.
Oh, I remember that, that was like 30 days or something.
Yes, but he was, he became a firefighter, and then became a police officer, not knowing in the same period of time, got paid for one long weekend, but couldn't pay him, because he would have had two salaries. So we made it a special employee, but we knew it was only gonna, but we even talked about the reserve clause, the reserves at that time, where it makes sense sometimes to maybe have full-time employees that can serve as a reserve, if they have the hours to give. I think Council Bacon's question, we're not answering, though, because I'm not too sure, unless Crystal has it. There is some cap on the special employee, on one of the jobs can only work so many hours, but I think it's like 800?
Yeah, I think there what the cap is, you can't work during your work hours. So if you're working at City Hall, 8 to 4, you can't work during that timeframe. That's the same thing we ran with Dave Guzman.
Yeah.
He wanted to go coach football. So the catch-all there was, he was going to stay later on some days, go coach footballs in the afternoon, and make up the time difference. So the rule is designed to say, you're gonna work your full-time job, the 40 hours, and then you can do the part-time, but you can't do it at the same timeframe. So here, she's not within the same timeframe, she's outside, based on what she gave for her hours.
Thank you.
Council Sullivan, you have something? Anyone else? Council Labor Martinez?
Didn't we have some situation like this one time, when somebody wanted a coach, I think it was a task collector?
It was Dave Guzman.
Yeah, David, right?
Yep.
And how did, well, how do we?
So we approved that in order for him to go, let's say, he went out at 3 o'clock, coached from 3 to 5. So he'd use a couple hours during the work week, but he'd stay late on Thursday, come in early another day to make up for those lost hours. And that was approved through, I forgot, went through the state or something like that. Anyone further? So the motion would be to grant the.
Make a motion to grant the exemption for Leah Destrom?
Second.
Motion is to grant the exemption. I'll do a roll call, just because I have the sheets, and why not? Anderson Burgos, Bartley.
Yes.
Bresnahan, Labor Martinez.
Yes.
McGee, yes. McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
And that's it. With your vote, you approved the exemption. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I did get a text that one of the members that was running late is inbound, they're on their way, and another member will be here a little after 7, because they're getting out of work late from their other job. So two are on the way. Just to let people know, Council Valentin is in New York for her work, so she won't be here tonight. Council Leahy, our thoughts and prayers are out to his family. There is a medical issue that has come up, so he will not be in attendance tonight due to that. So we send our thoughts and prayers to his family. With that, would we like to go out of order, or take up?
I have number two, Mr. President, I believe, I haven't, is a grant that the DPW wastewater treatment plant received?
This is 2019 Connecticut River CSO cleanup.
I'm not aware of any time constraints that I can remember being asked. There are some time constraints on other items this evening, but I believe this one can go to committee on finance.
Second.
Alright, so this will go to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, on these other transfers, 7 through 12, or, yeah, no, 7 through 11, seems like those need to go to finance. I'd make a motion to send them to finance.
Let me read those.
Second.
7 is from Council McGivern, order that they're hereby appropriated $8,583 from head clerk to veterans. Then 8 is the amount of $7,484.25 from head clerk personnel to veterans as well. And 9 is $9,149 from Sanitarion III to deputy commissioner. 10 is.
Excuse me, Mr. President, is that the deputy commissioner and the veterans?
I think so.
Yeah.
10 is.
Sanitarion's DPW?
Yeah, I think they're moving from DPW over to there. I'll look it up, give me one second.
Health. Board of Health?
Yeah, so it'd be Board of Health over to fund veteran services positions.
This is another Lotus problem, I say a little bit facetiously, but we need Wally Computer to step forward and to correct these glitches in this program. Because we should be seeing more than what we see on that, not just us, but our constituents, and people who look at the agendas online, should know more about what these items are about than just, you know, what we see, which is just a bare minimal. Doesn't really tell you even what department.
Just to go further, on 10, it's $12,591 from city solicitor, too, same thing. And then 11 would be from the paralegal position, $3,840 over to deputy.
Deputy Commissioner, what?
So it's all veterans?
Veterans. Let me just check.
Yep.
I'll put them in order, so I can. Alright, 7, 8, 9, so 7, there's no attachment, so it just says veterans. This is to veterans, that's number 8. That's number 7, sorry. 8 is veterans as well.
9, 10.
9. Just making sure, make sure on the attachments. I want to hear later, we didn't check. Yep, veterans. And veterans, so yes, to answer everyone's question. I do believe the email that was received on this was due to the budget cuts that we, or not budget cuts, that the, the way it came in the budget, and we didn't appropriate for the new positions, we wanted to go back to the old positions. They had to fund the old positions, because they were undercut. Therefore, they're coming back now to fund those old positions.
That's correct, Mr. President. I'm not sure, but I believe it was three months, it might have been four months, that they found money for that we took care of to keep the payroll going. And this is gonna extend it beyond whatever the original amount of money we found for, until, if there's a decision to be made, or any more discussion about the new positions, but currently, there are no new positions.
Correct.
And a motion?
So a motion is to, Council Murphy?
Just to ask a question, and I don't know the answer. So I know we left $25,000 in the investigator, and I know there was a special meeting, which I was not able to make on July 1st. So, does anybody recall, I know we transferred money into the deputy, I think we transferred money, deputy commissioner, plus the. money, deputy commissioner plus the, plus the clerk to get them funded.
To start, to pay for the first couple months, now this is coming in to fill the rest of the position. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. We just need it to go to committee so we know what salaries people are ending up with because it's a mess.
No, I, I agree with that. My only concern is that we still have enough money there that they're not gonna be getting laid off until we get a transfer. And I, and I don't know what the numbers were, but I was told they were getting close to the end, so that's my only concern, is that they are trying to do their work, and then if there is no funding, I assume they get laid off.
Counselor McGivern, today is the sixteenth, is there a meeting coming up for?
We have a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth. It's already a full agenda, but if this is within a time constraint, we, I will happily amend the agenda and get this on the agenda for next week. The final vote would not be till October first.
Correct.
Just to note that, you know, there's an extra Tuesday in this month. So if it was real dire situation, the President has the option of calling another special meeting. I, I, I'm, you know, gonna go out in the women, say that the department head and the mayor, after the budget fiasco of what happened, understands the importance and got this in front of us with enough time to do our due diligence, I hope.
I, I, that's, I hope as well, that was my concern, so.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I, I think that's the whole situation, and go to the committee, we'll study it. If we, if it's a problem with money shortage, I'm sure we would've heard from the veterans' agent if, if there was running out of money. So hopefully this will take care of it at the meeting, and if we have to in October, get that out there. We definitely don't want employees not having money, but because of the situation, the way the mayor tried to fund that or change that position without us being aware of it, that's just what it come down to. But we're definitely in support of veterans, all my colleagues of their department, what they do for our veterans, and hopefully we can get this taken care of in a timely manner.
Yes, Mr. President, I, I don't, I think there's some fair questions as to the source of these transfers on two or three of these items that we need to ask, and we need to, you know, either the auditor or the department head, like the Board of Health, when these are, sources are different departments than the department that, you know, the individuals are, are in where the money's going to, are working in, we need to know the, to be able to answer the questions of why there's surplus money in these accounts and it's only September. And I'm sure there's good answers, but we need to know those answers before we act on these.
All right, so the motion is to take seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Send it to finance.
I think it suggests we take a five-minute recess. We can have to win the other action this evening without one more vote to have the necessary nine votes to take our vote, that will be a final vote.
All right, so hold on, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll take a recess for ten minutes. Does that sound good?
Sound good.
We'll stand in recess. Join us is Counselor Lisi, so we have nine members.
Do you need a motion, Mr. President?
Yeah, we're gonna need a motion to come out of recess.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to take up item three.
Motion is to go to item three, which is.
We could suspend the rules and make it three and twelve together?
Three and twelve.
Second.
Suspend the rules, take up three and twelve as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Three is the fiscal 2018 firefighter grant for breathing apparatus, and then twelve is 2018 assistance to fire, firefighter grant. So taking those up, motion would be, what, Counselor McGivern?
Suspend the rules and take them up together, and then to, to pass the first reading on each.
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safer grants are nothing new to this body. There, it's an ongoing grant that the Fire Department has been very much, not just lucky, but very worthy of receiving, because I know that they aggressively pursue these grants. This particular, one of these particular grants, I know we got emails on them, the number is a significant number, and I think there is a little bit of a time constraint in terms of the, the acceptance of the grant and getting it into place. So I asked that the Fire Chief and others would be here this evening to make, if the body so sees fit, to make a presentation and to answer questions. I would suspend the rules to allow the chief and others to approach.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow the chief to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those? Chief, do you want to come in and sit? Do you wanna, right there, I, I know it's a lot of information you're gonna provide, so I don't know what's easiest for you, so.
Mr. President, can I ask that Deputy Chief Presskopowski?
Yep.
I said chief and others, because I didn't want to say Presskopowski.
Just make sure the button is on.
Sir.
Can you tell us a little bit about both grants, the time constraints, and then we'll open the questions.
Okay, the first grant under number three is the AFG SCBA grant, it's self-contained breathing apparatus. There are forty-seven units, and they range from seven to nine thousand dollars each, based on what their options are. The grant amount for that is three hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars, and there is a ten percent match from the city on that grant. So we'll stay with the SCBA grant. The ten percent match would come from, we pre, we recently have a bond out for the new fire trucks. Part of that bond is the equipment that goes on the fire trucks. What we're gonna do is buy SCBA with that bond money for the three new fire trucks that we're getting. Well, with this grant, we'd be able to take the thirty-eight thousand from that bond and get forty-seven SCBA units and put new SCBA in all of the apparatus. So that's a good match, that's, you're really compounding your money, if you spend thirty-eight thousand, you get three hundred and eighty-two thousand. So the grant specifics itself, and I'll let Deputy Chief Presskopowski explain, there's three separate items within that grant. But before I go any further and pass on to him, I'd like to say, as I forgot, because I was so excited to be here, thank you for all your support, and thank you for taking us up on such a short timeline. We're really excited about all this grant money that we're getting now. It's really good timing for us with the new trucks, and when I get into the next grant, I'll go on to some more babbling for you. But thank you. Deputy Chief?
Chief, just, just before Jeff starts, can you just, the time constraints, can you just outline what they are?
Okay, on the SCBA grant, we have to accept this grant by September twenty-seventh. So I know the timing's off with the finance committee coming up, and then the next city council meeting. And for the safer grant for the higher firefighters, that is October thirteenth. And I can explain more when I get into that section of that grant.
Thank you.
All right, we'll turn it over to Jeff, a little bit about the grant and details, and then.
As the chief said, thanks for having us down and taking this up in a timely fashion. As the chief said, this grant is broken down into three parts. The federal government is giving us three hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollars to spend on SCBA, forty-seven units, which will outfit all the fire trucks in the city with brand-new SCBA. With that forty-seven units, you get a harness, two bottles, two extra carbon fiber bottles, and a mask. That's one section of the grant. The second section is the masks themselves. What we're trying to do with that is to outfit every firefighter on the job with their own personal mask, fit-tested mask. It's a very important safety feature, so everyone is professionally fit-tested, the masks fit their face perfectly with no air seepage involved. And the third part is a cascade system to mobily fill our bottles on fire scenes. There's a small problem with this section of the grant, and I've already deliberated with FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security. The amount of money that they awarded us for this section, seventy thousand, is not enough money to buy this unit. So what FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security is allowing us to do is write an amendment under this section. They're gonna still give us the seventy thousand, but we're gonna be able to buy other items with that, with that money, including new PPE, which is the clothing that the firefighters wear, helmets, boots, more masks to get every firefighter on the job their own personal mask, and then ancillary equipment to go on the fire trucks and to outfit more firefighters with PPE.
Any questions for the chief or anyone? Counselor Lisi?
Thanks so much for coming down this evening, and really for the emails that you provided in advance. So what I'm hearing tonight is that the grant is for three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and two, I'm sorry, three hundred and eighty, eighty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And yet, I was under the impression that part of the funding was going to come from, I guess, a bond that came in under. So is the part of the bond that came in under included in that three, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, or is that the additional thirty-seven thousand, or what's that number?
No, it's not included in that three eighty-two. That's a separate number. The thirty-eight thousand, two hundred, the ten percent match will come out of the bond.
It's a ten percent match.
Correct.
And so the match is coming out of the bond, I see.
The total funding for the project is four hundred and twenty thousand, four twenty. That's the three eighty-two, two, plus the thirty-eight, two twenty, equals four twenty, four twenty.
And then the, the seventy, the seventy thousand for that third prong is, it's seventy thousand within the grant, but it's not limited to the apparatus itself. It's allowed to go beyond where we would have used it otherwise.
That's correct. That's correct. They're allowing us to write an amendment to change the scope of that funding.
So in a way, we're, we're getting back, in, in some ways, at thirty-eight, two twenty that we, we've invested.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, I think it's great that we're doing this and providing the, and the idea of having your own mask, to me, is a great idea, and I'm glad they're making sure that that happens. My, my question was, if we didn't get this grant, and I was looking at the budget, trying to figure out, were we getting any of these things out of our city budget?
No.
No. When was the last time that we did any of this out of our city budget?
The last large purchase we made for SCBA was ten to twelve years ago.
In, in my last, what is the life capacity for the SCBA?
Excuse me. It's anywhere between ten to fifteen years, or two NFPA cycles, as NFPA keeps changing their standards. So after it gets through two cycles, the third cycle means it's obsolete. We are past two cycles now in this SCBA. So that's why the timing's good, otherwise we'd have had to come in and try to figure out an alternative means of financing the SCBA.
Okay, let me ask two more questions then.
Sure.
So when you were planning your budget, did, did you already have a pretty good idea you had a chance for this grant? Or were you instructed not to be, we weren't gonna be able to give you that money anyway?
We had a good feeling we might get this grant, but it was also part of a capital outlay that I was, that I put in, so.
Okay.
Ready to go.
Okay. And so all of these go under the, the apparatus themselves, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And upkeep and, that's just the, the officer's responsibility to make sure they're up, they're up kept every shift or whatever?
Every, every time somebody changes shifts, they come in, they check that air pack, make sure it's operational, has air in it. So it gets turned on and off a lot, and then when you go on any calls, you put it on your back, you carry it around, you turn, it's turned on. So we use it a lot. The ones that we have are pretty worn out. We try to maintain them the best we can, but, I mean, sometimes we get hit with five hundred, eight hundred dollar bills just to fix those things, so they're really at the end of their life, and they're obsolete, so this is a blessing.
Okay, again, I'm very pleased that you got the grant, and very pleased we're doing, we're providing better protections for our firefighters, and my hope is that we don't wait ten or twelve years before we look again. And if their lifespan is ten to fifteen, I encourage us to think the lifespan is ten, and not wait and find out that it was, we're well past that, so thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thanks a lot. Thanks, chief and deputy chief, for coming down and for applying for these grants. I know you've gotten several of these grants over the years, and they're a tough thing to do. I was very pleased to hear, you know, the, the support that we've gotten from our congressman and from the mayor getting these grants in here. And it's, it's important, I think, the, the training that our employees get, the, the men and women of the Fire Department, and do get great training, but the equipment is actually the, one of the most important parts of any, any firefighter. Having the, the right tools to do the job and having the safety equipment when you're, when you're going to a fire, and, and having that in good working condition. So I really thank you for doing this, and, and I'm sure the men and women of the Fire Department too, and the citizens of Hoyoke, that you have the proper tools to get the job done in a safe and efficient manner. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
I think this is a fantastic way to spend both the, the bond money and a great way for female to participate within the, within the city and give us some money for something that is so, so direly important and needed to, to honor our firefighters. It sadly reminds me of a, a story, an incident about twenty years ago in Worcester, where Worcester lost six firefighters, of four of them looking for two firefighters whose supply ran out while they were lost inside that warehouse building. And then eventually, the, the other four that went in to find them, I'm telling, I'm telling the story to people who I know lived it, not lived it, but certainly understand it better than me. Jeff, is there any advance, lifespan is one thing, but there's any advance on these breathing apparatus, on how long a use will last?
The bottles themselves are our bottles. They're filled to forty-five hundred PSI. The advancements are more in the harness, they, they fit the firefighter better, they let the firefighter work longer with under, with less duress on their hips and on their shoulders, they fit the firefighter better, so the firefighter can work longer under less duress from the, from the air pack itself. It puts a lot of pressure on your shoulders and on your hips when you're wearing that during a fire.
Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Mr. President, do we have a communication from the auditor relative to the match?
No letter from the auditor.
Thanks, chief.
Good question.
Thanks, chief. Right, right. Right, so, yeah. Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we ask the auditor for communication sent to us via email immediately. It's not gonna happen prior to a vote, so.
Second.
Thank you. So just under discussion, I have no, I would never doubt the chief, and I'm positive that this is accurate, but I want the communication to, because this is from a, a bond, so there's apparently a leftover balance in the bond. And speaking with the chief, I, I, it must've been Friday when we conferred, chief said that this, this matching funds kind of goes hand in glove with, with the purposes of the bond. I think I recall you saying something to that effect, chief. But what I do want to see in that letter, I want to see what's the balance of the bond, and what are the, what are the city's intentions for the use of the balance of the bond? I mean, I'm perplexed as to why we don't have communication now, when it's a public agenda, from somebody. But we don't. Thank you. Oh, I, I, if I get a vote then, so on the motion.
So you want a motion to get a communication from the auditor for the balance of the bond and the use of the balance?
I want to get a communication from the auditor that, that there is a balance of thirty-eight thousand dollars, that I want to know what the, as you said, I want to know what the balance of the bond funds are, and I want to know what, what the intended use balance of the bond funds are, and I want to know what, what the intended use or uses are of the balance, if there is any. And I'd like a, yeah, I'd like that emailed to us, and I'd like that presented at a, at the next public agenda, which I think is October first, but I'd like to have at least emailed to us.
I'll call, I'll call tomorrow and get that.
Great.
No problem with that. Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. My question wasn't going to be that precise, but it was along those lines, because I did hear you say that there was money in the bond for equipment for the trucks.
Then that's correct.
And that's the category that you're looking at for the match?
Correct. We've already purchased some of the equipment for all the trucks as are being built, and the SCBA would be the last portion that would be purchased. I, I don't want to shoot from the hip, but I think there was like a hundred and twenty thousand in there left in that bond to still buy some equipment and whatnot, so. But the auditor.
But, right, just to confirm, to make it neat, tight up.
It makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Good question.
Yep.
So currently, the motion is to pass the first reading, but you just want a communication, Counselor Bartley, on that?
Well, I want to make it a motion, and it's been seconded, and so I want it to be formally presented to the auditor. I mean, I'm just perplexed as to why we don't have it now, but we don't have it, so let's send her, send her a formal motion, I guess.
All right, so we'll make a motion to ask the auditor to provide the information on the balance of the bond and the uses of the bond balances, if there are any. That is the motion that was seconded. And is that, Counselor Lisi?
Thank you. And wouldn't she, I mean, who would then, like, authorize the reallocation of that, that money? Do we have to actually send a copy to the mayor, or?
It's not a reallocation.
It's not a reallocation. It's just actually, it's a good question. It's, we bonded for, just call it a million dollars for the truck, and it came back at nine hundred thousand. Well, you only have to bond for nine hundred thousand, you have access that would just not be used. Here, instead of that, they're going to try and use some of it for, for this equipment. So I, I mean, good intent, I, I really don't have a problem with it, but to get the communication for it, I understand the, the concern, so we can ask for it.
Right.
Counselor Bacon?
Because if we were revising the bond, it would have to come back to us. We just want documentation that we don't need to.
Can't go outside the scope of the bond.
We can't go outside, that's the Bartley amendment.
One of my favorite amendments.
Yeah, we're not going outside the scope of the bond, we're just using the money.
But we want it documented.
Yeah, we're undocumented, yep. That answer the question?
Don't do anymore.
And, and I know about going outside the scope of a bond.
All right, so on Counselor Bartley's motion to get that in a communication form, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Back to the original, which was.
Make a motion to pass the second reading?
Well, there was.
On a motion to pass the first reading first.
Okay.
First reading for this grant. Remember, we took them up as a package to discuss them. We're just going to do the first reading on this grant, which is the breathing apparatus. Everyone clear on that? So motion is passed the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those post.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Will be passed the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. That's me again. Vote yes, you're voting for the grant. Counselor Lisi?
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask one more question.
Sure, sure.
So Chief Pond, did you connect at all with the mayor about the idea to use the money out of the bond as opposed to finding, I mean, because at the end of the day, thirty-eight thousand, you know, two twenty is not going to be a significant amount of money that I don't think we could find within the budget itself. If, I mean, I don't, I don't have a daily accounting of the, of the budget, and it seems that when we take it with the bond, there's going to be an interest payment associated with that moving forward, as opposed to if we had the thirty-eight thousand, two twenty somewhere tucked in the budget, it would be more affordable in the long run to take it from there. So did you have a conversation about the trade-offs?
We had a discussion. He knows it's going to come from the bond, so does the auditor, and the trade-off is, we're going to buy SCBA with that hundred thousand in there anyways, so why not take the thirty-eight thousand and put it towards that grant?
Yeah, I understand the multiplier effect of the equipment, and, and I think it's a, you know, it's a valuable grant in that sense, because we're getting the forty-seven units out of it, as opposed to, I'm sure, far fewer if we were to buy them on our own. But in terms of the money spent today, so if we spend, you know, thirty-eight, two twenty out of the bond versus two, thirty-eight, two twenty out of the budget, there's a, there's a impact down the road if we are taking it from the bond as opposed to the, the budget. So I just wanted to make sure that you had a conversation with the mayor and the auditor about how that's going to balance out for, for the city.
Not on the interest portion itself that you're, that you're talking about, but as far as the getting out of free cash, there is no free cash now, and free cash has not been certified up to this point. So the timing of the grant being, being approved, and so that's kind of where we're at now.
Okay.
So we're looking at funding sources, and that's what came up, was that funding source, since we're going to use it anyways.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Just to clarify, and these are good questions and good points that are being raised, we're, we're not voting on the match tonight. We do need to know where the match is, we do need to know that there is a match, but that match is a separate transaction that takes place with the chief appropriating financial officer and the department heads, and with, of course, the blessing of the auditor. We're only voting on the acceptance of the bond, knowing that the city has to pay a match and identified, has been identified through the chief itself. And I, I think if, if Counselor Lisi's point, you know, if there is other monies out there, the mayor could change his mind and use other monies if he wanted to.
Join us is Councillor Anderson Burgos. We are on item number three, which is the grant for the Fire Department for the breathing apparatus.
No.
There's the.
Agenda. It's about this breathing apparatus.
So just to give you. The city received a three hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred dollar grant, has to do a ten percent match, thirty-eight thousand, two twenty, which they're going to get that from the bond that they used for the fire trucks. And therefore, the grand total would be four hundred and twenty thou, four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars to buy new breathing apparatus and other equipment that they're already going to get for the trucks anyways. So this grant is a, a way of using it to help offset the costs. Any further questions? So we're back to the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Barr Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Lisi?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes? Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
What's your vote? You approve the grant.
Thank you.
Twelve is the fiscal year 2018 Assistant to Firefighter Grant. Turn it back over, or make a motion to receive.
Pass the first reading?
First reading.
Second.
Under discussion, Counselor McGivern, then over to Fire, or however you want to do it, Counselor.
Thank you. Really quick, it's really with the chief and the deputy chief to, to make the presentation, but, you know, the Safer Grant is, we've been fortunate to get and use for, I believe, just about all salaries for firefighters, and I think it's a very important grant, and certainly one that we don't want to, to, to miss in a given year, or hopefully, it doesn't dry up for many years to come until, until we all retire, right, Mr. President?
Oh, yeah.
But it's, it's, it's a great grant in, in terms of, this one is a significant one this year. It's a great grant in terms of the, it's, it's federal monies coming through the state, but, you know, something that we used to have a lot more of and should have a lot more of because of our, our position as a gateway community, but we'll take what we get and use it the best way we can.
Turn it over to the chief to tell us a little bit about the grant, and we'll open up to questions.
Thank you. The Safer Grant is, this, this time is broken up into three years. It's for six firefighters, full salary benefit for three years, but it's no longer full. The three years is seventy-five percent for the first year, seventy-five percent for the second year, and thirty-five percent for the third year. It used to be two years full salary benefits, they kind of stretched it out. Seven hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars over three years for six firefighters. The timing on this is the same as the SCBA, couldn't be better. We're in the process of hiring now. We actually interviewed twenty candidates on September ninth and tenth, and out of that twenty candidates, there have been nine selected. Those candidates are currently going through medical evaluations, and they'll have to do a physical abilities test before they can actually be accepted. So the timing of this grant is great, because out of those nine firefighters, which are in our budget, to have those nine firefighters, it's not adding anything to the budget. Six of them can be on this grant. So it, we're not looking for anything additional, we're just looking to get this grant accepted so we can put those, put six of those nine firefighters on the grant. We cannot, if we hire these firefighters before this grant's accepted, they can't be on the grant. So it's kind of a timing issue. That's why we're trying to streamline this thing and get it through. This is our fourth Safer Grant, and in fact, when I, when Congressman Neal came out the other day, and Mayor Morse was there, and we talked about all the grants that we get here, and the Fire Department alone, we've got close to five and a half million dollars since 2012 in federal grants. So we're doing our thing there, and this is just another thing to keep pushing us along and make sure we have the resources and the personnel to keep the city safe.
Any questions for the chief? Counselor Murphy?
Some comments as well as questions. We, we talked this morning, and, you know, there's a few things, as you were just talking about, if we hire, if we get, approve this grant, which I'm all in favor of approving, that we would be able to hire the six on the grant as opposed to our budget, and that would give us, I believe, that would get us up to eighty, if I think.
Correct.
Comments this morning, from seventy-one. We're now eleven firefighters short, and we're going to be further short in the not-too-distant future. So my, two things, my, I would hope, and I'm trying to get this message through to all parties necessary, that we would use the monies that we save from that grant to, in fact, go ahead and hire what could be between six and, six and a half firefighter, I guess you can't hire a half a firefighter, but six more firefighters, based on the funding, plus on the fact that we still have that money in the budget, and get back to a, to a case where we have a full complement of firefighters to what we, basically, to somewhat closer to what we used to have, and as future vacancies occur, we aren't having to go ten, eleven at a time, we're doing three or four, so we're not having significant firefighter shortages, which is, you know, when you're eleven firefighters short, that's a major discrepancy, and.
Yes.
I, I know, the chief talked to me about civil service, he's talked to me about, we can't do it if we don't have the money in the budget and all the other aspects, but, you know, with this grant, my hope is that we will get to the point where we have a full complement of firefighters, which in the long run will probably save us in terms of overtime. It'll obviously make it potentially safer for the firefighters going to fires, and it will make it somewhat, I would think, more efficient for the people that are in a fire situation to have a full staffing of the fire trucks. So I'm just, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this, and I, I do hope that we will move and adopt this, but I also hope that we will begin the process immediately to go ahead and hire the next six or seven firefighters. We just did twenty interviews.
Correct.
You know, that we would not hire, hire just nine, that we would go beyond that nine and get a complement, which would get us to about eighty-six, and I think, it wasn't that long ago, we had eighty-eight. So, I mean, let's make the city as safe as we can, let's live within the budget, we're just there. We got this grant, and, and I want to thank Congressman Neal for helping us get that grant, as well as the Fire Chief and, and other officials here, trying to make sure it happens. But, you know, we need to make sure we have the best equipment and the best staffing, and I think moving forward can do that. So I just, I just want to endorse what's going on, and I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you.
Anyway, Counselor Bacon?
I just want to say congratulations on four Safer Grants.
Thank you.
I think it just shows the diligence and the aggressive pursuit of the available monies, and I think it's a credit to the department. Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Bartley?
Chief, I didn't, I didn't notice a match in here.
There is no match on this grant, sir.
Yeah, I didn't think, I just wanted you to say that.
I was so excited, I couldn't even put out there.
Counselor Bartley, just to point out to you, it's actually in big, bold, black. There is no match.
Well, I, I know. I know, I just.
It's good.
It's, it's more quotable when it comes from the Fire Chief, so. My friend Dennis will pick up on that, because he's actually a good reporter.
Very good.
The, I'll stop there. The, the, it just shows, Mr. President, the consequences of a veteran congressman, a thirty-year veteran congressman. So I want to thank Mr. Neal for his continued efforts on behalf of the Holyoke, City of Holyoke and the Holyoke Fire Department. Having a thirty-year veteran in Washington representing us, I think, goes a long way, a long way, and it, it makes a difference. One other thing that I will say, if, if we heard the chief right, we, we, we heard there were twenty interviews conducted by the unpaid fire commissioners, the volunteer fire commissioners. This body has asked the mayor since last spring to give us an answer. Mr. Mayor, will you allow us to have privileges to interview fire commissioners? In my tenure, we have never rejected one mayoral appointee, not one, but we don't get an answer. In return for that, we said we would happily go through a charter change, and this is Mr. Sullivan, my, our order, to provide a stipend, deservedly so. So the City of Holyoke runs on, on volunteers to a great extent. There are probably as many volunteers as there are employees, but some of these volunteers go the extra mile, such as the fire commissioners that we have, we have working for us, but for some reason, some reason, we can't get an answer out of the mayor. Similarly, a question I have in the Finance Committee relative to the former employee that has a contract with the City of Holyoke. I want my colleagues to know that I filed the Freedom of Information Act request with the city solicitor last week. Five days to respond, I'm still waiting for the response. Time is up as of today, so I, I can't get an answer. Now, these are public documents, Mr. President. I don't know what the problem is exactly with procuring a public document, but if we can't get it in timely fashion, I will ask your cooperation as, as the city council president to get directly involved with these requests. So there are two requests on the table, Mr. President. One is, I want the, the documents relative to former employees who are getting contracts with the, with the City of Holyoke. No bid, no advertised contracts, by the way. And second of all, I want to get an answer from the mayor, whether it's yes or no. I mean, the answer is the answer. I, I mean, whatever it is, but since last March, I know specifically, I had a conversation with, with, with fire commissioners relative to this, so I want an answer from the mayor. Is he going to allow us to have approval for fire commissioners? I mean, I, I think we need to get your involvement, Mr. President. Hopefully, at the next President's Report, October first, you'll, you'll have, you'll have some kind of indication on these two fronts. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Tomlin?
I, I think we're here for this, these grants, and I think that's the important thing, is, you know, talking about the grants and the money that the city has gotten over the years with the Safer Grants and into the department, to try to get this department fully funded as much as possible, as Counselor Murphy stated. The more firefighters you have, and the more healthier firefighters you have on duty, it's going to cut down on overtime, hopefully, you know, with the new system you've been working, and it seems like it has been working with less overtime over the, over the past couple of years. So I really appreciate the work that departments does, does on a day-in and day-out basis, not just the supervisors, but the, the workers, the, the people that go out there on, on the trucks every day and, and fight the fires. I really want to commend you in, in getting this money for a community that is in dire need of funding, you know, one of the poorest communities in the state, that every little bit helps because of what we're trying to work with on a daily basis and try to keep our trash trucks going and fire departments and police cars in motion. So thank you so much for the work you've done, and congratulations, and keep getting the grants as much as we can. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Counselor Barr Martinez?
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations, but I also have a question. Are these competitive grants, or they are?
These are highly competitive grants. They do not give these out. So to have four in the last six years is pretty much amazing. These are highly competitive grants, they do not give these out, so to have four in the last six years is pretty much amazing.
So thank you for your work, cause it takes a lot of work for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Lisi?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you got LaBran Martinez.
Anyone further? Alright, if there's no one further, motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is passed the second reading, clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant. Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor LaBran Martinez?
Yes.
Counselor Lisi?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes? Counselor McGivern?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve the grant. Thank you both for coming down.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it, have a great evening, and as always, I appreciate your time here.
Mr. President, if we could suspend the rules for items four, five, and six to have one discussion, and I think we, if we deem to go forward, we would have two different votes.
Motion is take up four, five, and six as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four is the injured on duty, there was a typo last time, that's why it was sent, it came back to us, so it's lieutenant firefighters, two injured on duty, of which there are- One, two, three, injured on duty. Five is the school department with regards to, uh, the increase, uh, with regards to charter school, as well as the increase for funding, they did finally come back with, uh, two orders in order to deal with the, last time we came up about the typo, so motion be to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, uh, as, as you said, Mr. President, these are replacement orders, the finance committee has met with the, uh, school department, both Doctors Reich and Anthony Soto on, on this positive situation, uh, it's, it's not unprecedented, but the, the numbers are, are pretty much unprecedented in, uh, we'll say, uh, modern-day time. Um, the, these are additional appropriations, when the budget was put together this year, as always, the state budget, or it seems like as always, the state budget had not been finalized, uh, in doing so, the city, uh, put together the best budget they could in the areas of the schools, they estimated the budget on the Senate version, if I remember correctly, this year, it changes each year. What we found out was that, and this is a bit unusual, it doesn't usually happen, is actually the governor's version that, uh, passed, meaning that there was a significant increase to chapter seventy monies. Um, we, we have a, a tremendous, I think, uh, relationship now with Doctors Reich and Anthony Soto in terms of transparency of the budget process with the schools, uh, and I, and I think they've been wonderful, not just in, in looking for our help to, uh, to, to take the votes that are necessary to allow them to, uh, receive, appropriate, and use the monies. So what they put together for us, um, and it got caught up with that Lotus situation with, uh, with the, with the program that the, uh, I know Wally computers are gonna be working on it to make it a little bit easier for the auditor, the mayor, and the city clerk to, uh, get these things to us in, in a format that would be, would make sense that we could vote on. And what, what we're seeing is, just a reminder real quick, was that we had a bigger presentation at our last meeting, um, is an increase in chapter seventy monies that will show initially one point of four-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, million dollars, and, and those, those dollars will go directly into the line items known as, as salaries within the school budget. Just a reminder, um, even when the school committee could vote on it, we, uh, when, back when the school committee could vote on it, we never had line item control over the school budget, we don't have line item control over the school budget now, but my, my comments are that both Anthony Soto and Doctors Reich want us to understand and to be part of what they're doing, and show us where the monies are going. So because chapter seventy monies pays for individual students' education, it has not just an impact on the public school dollars, has an impact on the charter school dollars, and has an impact on the, uh, school choice students who are, are Hoyoke students who choose to go to other systems. So the, the numbers that you see in front of you this evening, if we choose to adopt, would just solidify the, uh, the budget for the school department, which, um, which now in September, and they are going forward, but it would solidify the additional monies that they would be allowed to spend in, in these areas, and it would adjust both the school tuition, um, monies, and would adjust the, uh, the charter school monies themselves. The other vote, Mr. President, is, is, I'm not too sure if it's in front of you, but it's that reduction that, um, we just have to take because, and that could actually take place when we set the tax rate, but it's a reduction in the, uh, the formula because of a number change in the charter school students.
Yeah, they're both-
Is that in front of us this evening?
Five, eight, six.
Okay, so that's, that's what's before us, I'd be happy to answer whatever questions I can, um, both Doctors Reich and Anthony Soto gave a thorough presentation, I know Ryan got the extra packets for people who are not allowed, who could not make the finance committee meeting that evening, um, I, again, I can't say enough work, enough, uh, good words about how hard they're working to, uh, keep us informed.
Counselor Lisi?
Thank you, um, so the way that I understand it, uh, the state receipts have come in, and therefore, to make these line items whole, um, we can actually, as a city, um, take back, uh, a certain portion from each of these i- items, because the state is covering that, is that how, is that how we understand this with the deduction?
I, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm just gonna say it a little bit different, the, the deduction is, there's two deductions, but the one reduction, that's why I said it should be a separate vote, is the one where the, the formula, because of the number of charter school kids, did change, but the addition, additional appropriation is the important vote this evening, is these, any dollar that we receive, whether it's chapter seventies, whether it's property tax, whether it's money, grant money that came in early this evening, has to pass the first appropriation, only the mayor can initiate that, the mayor has signed off on this, and then only the city council can agree with the mayor, or disagree, to appropriate the money for use. Therefore, we get to know where the money is going, what I just explained is, is in the school department budget, the, you know, the, the way we see money in the school department budget isn't the same way we see money in the, uh, the city budget, city side budget itself. But yes, there, there's a little domino's effect, if I heard Counselor Lisi correctly, that by receiving the monies, there's some changes that have to be made, and the schools have showed that to us, and then there's a second change that they're asking us to make now, um, which I think can be done anywhere between now and the, uh, time we set the tax rate.
Counselor Lisi?
And just on the, um, agenda that I'm looking at, item four says, um, appropriate the transfer, um, of twenty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-three and twenty-five cents as follows.
That's injured on duty. That's, has nothing to do with the schools.
So why, why are we looking at four, five, and six then, is it six-
No, we just took them up as a package to talk about them.
Okay.
The answer to Counselor Lisi's question is, Counselor McGivern doesn't have item four in front of him, and I thought it was that other reduction for the schools.
Oh, no, I, I read-
My, my, that's my fault.
No, no, I read out the first one, it's-
Yes, you did.
Injured on duty, twenty-two-thousand-six-forty-three-twenty-five. Five is the decrease in the charter school spending from the thirty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen. Six is the increase in tuition assessment and everything else that you spoke about. So there's two for the schools, one for the charter deduction, one for the increase, and then there's the injured on duty.
Okay. The item number four on my agenda still doesn't say where it would be appropriated to, so I don't know if that's been corrected on the paper copies.
It says on here, um, from lieutenants, firefighters, so seven-thousand-eight-hundred-forty-six-fifty-three cents, fourteen-thousand-seven-ninety-six-seventy-two cents, total of twenty-two-thousand-six-forty-three-twenty-five, two injured on duty. So basically, you're taking from the firefighter's line item and throwing it into the injured on duty. Counselor Bacon?
Isn't that the one that was just added incorrectly?
It was, so what happened-
My agenda, it's just fixing it.
What happened was, when we received it last time, uh, they had two different numbers that didn't add up, so we referred it to committee, they fixed it, and then sent it back.
Alright, thank you.
Do you wanna take the injured on duty just to get rid of it and get rid of the confusion?
Yeah.
So motion be to pass the first reading?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, if you vote yes, you're voting for transferring from one line to the other to pay for injured on duty. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
LaBran Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee, yes? McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. Now on to five, which was, uh, due to the decrease in state charter school spending, tuition assessment from, uh, twelve-million-five-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars, five-hundred-and-eighty-six cents, to twelve-million-five-twenty-two-eight-seventy, uh, line item should be deducted, reduced, thirty-six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, original appropriation of twelve-thousand-five, or twelve-million-five-five-nine-five-eight-six.
Make a motion to receive and adopt.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion is pass the second reading, if you vote, clerk call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for item five. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
LaBran Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee, yes? McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve that transfer. Six is due to the increase in state education receipts from seventy-six-million-six-thirty-one-three-forty, to seventy-eight-million-four-nineteen-six-six-five, the increase in tuition assessment, uh, two, then it goes to page twenty-eight with the right allocations for the school budget and spending.
Make a motion to, uh, receive the appropriation and pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
LaBran Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee, yes? McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tallman?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
With your vote, you approve that transfer.
Mr. President, I'd just like to say it's nice to be sitting here in September and getting additional monies and not being, reducing the budget as we usually are by October.
This is true, and then one final thing, Counselor Bartley, tomorrow, four-thirty, Biggie, gate, what again, gate one. Just a reminder, four-thirty, gate one tomorrow, Biggie, Hoyoke Day. With that, motion is to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.